I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of City Council, January the 4th, 2016. Going to ask Councilman Forrest Fleming if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. I'll ask our city attorney, Louie Veeney, to please lead us in an invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us begin by pausing in silence so that each one of us may offer his or her own private reflections before we begin tonight's meeting, and I will close with prayer. Lord, we ask your blessing on this council and on its work tonight, and ask your guidance in deciding all the issues which council may face, so that such decisions work out for the best of this city and its residents. We ask all of our prayers in Christ's name. Amen.
I'd like to introduce City Council. On my far right is Forrest Fleming, City Councilman. Louie Veeney, our city attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. To my left, Sally Sandy, our city manager. We have Sidney Simmons, City Council. John Cantrell, City Council. Kelly Russell, our recording secretary. And Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community. We have a presentation of service pins tonight. Sharon Jablonsky will be receiving her 25-year service pin. Sharon, if you'd like to come to the microphone, please. I'm going to ask Councilman John Cantrell to present the service pin to you, please.
Just think of something, okay? Just one thing.
I remember you as a child.
Thank you, gentlemen. It has sincerely been an honor. It's hard to believe 25 years has flown by, and I even came back for a second round. So, I appreciate all the opportunity that has been given to me, and I hope to continue to do you a good job. Thank you.
Thanks. For our upcoming events at Kama, the Buddy Holly Story is Sunday, January the 10th, at 3:00. The Hot Sardines is Thursday, January 28th, at 7:30. And we have a very special anniversary proclamation for Rotary, the Rotary Club of Morganton. I want to ask Sidney Simmons if he'll present the proclamation, and ask Ron George to please come to the podium as I read the resolution. Whereas the Rotary Club of Morganton held its organizational meeting on January the 7th, 1941, its first club meeting on January the 15th, 1941, and received its charter from Rotary International on January 27th, 1941. And whereas during the 75 years since that beginning, the Rotary Club of Morganton has played a leadership role in the civic and community life of Morganton, holding numerous community events, financially supporting numerous community, educational, and charitable causes, and contributing time and talents to all types of local community groups and organizations. And whereas, in addition to local projects, the Rotary Club of Morganton has joined with 33,000 Rotary Clubs throughout the world to support humanitarian projects in over 122 countries, including the Polio Plus Program, which is fighting to eradicate polio in the world, and thus far has immunized over 2 billion children against this disease. And whereas the City of Morganton and its citizens have benefited enormously from the leadership and active community involvement of the Rotary Club of Morganton and its members over the past 75 years, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Morganton hereby congratulate the Rotary Club of Morganton as it celebrates 75 years of service to the community and the world, and be it further resolved that the mayor and members of the city council sincerely thank the members of the Rotary Club of Morganton, both past and present, for their many contributions to the Morganton community and for actively demonstrating the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self." Adopted this 4th of January, 2016, Ronnie Thompson, mayor; Sally Sandy, city clerk. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. If I might just say a word about Rotary. You'll know all the words as a past district governor of Rotary. But Rotary is, as the resolution says, "an international service organization with 33,000 clubs and 1.2 million members throughout the world that support community service and humanitarian projects, both at home and around the globe." In Morganton, the Rotary Club has 55 members currently. To give you an idea of the face of Rotary, and I am the president of Rotary, we have a couple of our members with us. We have the past president, immediate past president of Rotary, Waits Gordon, is here. Waits, you all pretty much know Waits. And our president-elect, who will be president starting in July, Hugh Morgan. Hugh? So, we have continuity here in terms of presidents. Let me mention just a couple of things that the club does now. We provide scholarships for high school seniors. We fund a summer reading program during the summer for disadvantaged children. We send students to a summer youth leadership program. Financially support the literacy council, the Boy Scouts, youth baseball. Internationally, we have a foreign exchange student that we sponsor every year. This year, she is from Paris, France. I thought that would somewhat be culture shock for her, but nevertheless, she seems to have enjoyed her visit. We sponsor a Stop Hunger Now Meal Packaging Event with the local high schools, and we spent, packaged over 10,000 meals this year. We will package over 10,000 meals to be sent to Haiti. And the club itself supports Rotary International and the humanitarian projects around the world with contribution of over $5,000 each year. We hold our annual pancake breakfast, as you know, each November, which is our major fundraiser and also is often a good event for the community. And also the 5K run, it's a relatively new addition to that that we're doing. And in March, we honor a community volunteer leader who has contributed substantially to our community. And as you may have seen in the past, that has been known as the man of the year. But this year, we are changing that to be the distinguished person of the year, and it will now be open to honor either a man or a woman. So, that will be in March of this year. So, in closing, we're proud to be Rotarians. We're proud to be members of the Morganton community, and we look forward to another 75 years of service to this community and to the world. And thank you again for the resolution.
Next, on our public advocacy, we were going to get an update, I think, on the East Meeting property. Lee Anderson, would you, are you going to bring that update, please?
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman. The East Meeting Street Properties that we viewed some months ago on our tour with dilapidated structures, you may recall you adopted a new ordinance, abandoned structures ordinance, back about midway through 2014. We have begun that process. We've met with both the property owners. We have a release to go on the property to obtain bids for demolition of one of the properties. The other, the property owner, has been reluctant to allow us to enter the property. So, we would have to either continue to work with that individual to give us permission to go onto the property, to do the work necessary to evaluate that, or obtain a search warrant to go on to the property, to do the proper inspection work, to finish that up. We are going to be moving forward with the one that we do have, and we will bring you bids probably within the next 30 to 60 days.
Counselor, have any questions for Lee? Thank you, Lee. One other issue on public advocacy, I do want to remind folks in the audience and at home, we do have a very important bond referendum coming up on March 15th, very critical to State of North Carolina and especially to Burke County. So, please, register, if you're not registered to vote, please do so, and support that bond referendum coming up on May 15th.
March 15th.
March 15th, excuse me. Thank you, Lou.
Make a comment on that?
Sure.
In addition to that, we would hope the general public would understand that along with that bond issue will be the School of Math and Science, which supposedly will be located here in Morganton, Burke County. So, that's very important. It's an important issue due to the fact that along with the School of Math and Science would bring industry and jobs. So, you folks that are interested in industry and jobs, we hope that you would seriously consider supporting the bond issue. Thank you.
Any other comments? Sally, do we have anything for electories?
No, we do not.
Next on the agenda is consideration of filling the District 4 council vacancy. Sally, you want to provide a summary for us, please?
At the December meeting, it seems like that was so long ago. At the December meeting, you all decided that you would accept applications from the community. The requirements for someone to apply is that they be a registered voter and live within District 4. And you accepted applications, was advertised in the newspaper, on our website, and you received applications that you have all been given. And then you decided you would review those, and it would be an item at this meeting that you would take up consideration of those applications. And you have received four that are included in your packets.
Thank you, Sally. We have to have a motion for procedure, and I'd like to read that procedure so that people in the audience and at home will understand the procedure. Number one, four individual applicants have submitted applications for the council vacancy. All four applicants will be considered to be in nomination. Number two, a written ballot will be given to the mayor and each of the three serving councilmen with all four applicant names on that ballot. The mayor and each of the three councilmen will mark the ballot to indicate his choice of a single candidate. The ballots will then be passed to the clerk, who will announce the vote by reading aloud each ballot with the name and the vote of the mayor and each councilman. If any candidate receives at least three votes on the ballot, that person will be nominated and shall fill the seat. If no candidate gets more than two votes, then the two applicants with the lowest totals are eliminated, and the two highest vote-getters will advance to a second ballot in the same format as the first round. However, if the initial vote is two, one, and one, then the council will proceed to vote yes or no on whether to select the candidate who received the two ballots, ballot, two votes. And if that candidate receives at least three votes, he or she is the winner. If upon such vote, such candidate does not receive at least three positive votes, then that candidate will advance to the second round of balloting, in which the only other name on the ballot will be the one who received a single vote in the first round. The decision as to which of the two who got single votes should advance to the second round shall be made by drawing straws or a similar fair method. If a second round of balloting is held, it shall be conducted exactly as the first round, but with only two names on the ballot. Once any candidate gets at least three votes, that person is the choice and may be sworn in at the beginning of the next council meeting. At any time, if no candidate receives at least three votes, the council may suspend the selection process and return to further consideration of filling this vacancy at the council's next meeting.
We need a motion to adopt that.
We have a motion to adopt such procedure.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the procedure for selecting this person to fill city council for a term ending December 17th. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. So, gentlemen, you have ballot one. If you will mark your ballot, and please pass it to our recording secretary.
This is the first ballot. Councilman Cantrell voted for Wendy Cato. Councilman Simmons voted for John Henry. Councilman Fleming voted for Wendy Cato. And Mayor Thompson voted for John Henry.
So, the vote was two to two, correct?
Yes.
Gentlemen, we have a second ballot, and those two names, Wendy Cato and John Henry, will be the only two considered at this time.
So, you'll now be proceeding to vote on those two?
On the second ballot, that's correct.
Okay, this is ballot two. Councilman Cantrell voted for Wendy Cato. Councilman Simmons voted for John Henry. Mayor Thompson voted for John Henry. Councilman Fleming voted for Wendy Cato.
Vote again is two to two. Let's do ballot number three, please, just one more time, if you will vote for Wendy Cato or John Henry.
Okay, this is the third ballot. Councilman Cantrell voted for Wendy Cato. Councilman Fleming voted for Wendy Cato. Mayor Thompson voted for John Henry. And Councilman Simmons voted for John Henry.
Okay, gentlemen, we've had three ballots. The council has voted to suspend the selection process and return to further consideration at our next council meeting. For the public's information, this seat has to be filled within 90 days after December the 7th, when my seat in District 4 was given up. Is that correct?
That is what the ordinance, what our code calls for.
Okay. We'll move along to the consent agenda, please. Under the consent agenda, we have several items. Sally?
The consent agenda before you tonight includes five items, but I would like to begin by removing item D, which talks about the name change of Mountain View Street. We have just found out today there is a meeting on Wednesday that the 911 group is holding that we've been invited to with all the other municipalities in the county. So, we would ask that we not take action on that until after that meeting. So, the consent agenda before you would be four items. For those of you viewing at home, it would be minutes for the regular meeting on December 7th, for the special meeting held on December 3rd, tax releases in the amount of $6,635.97, the second reading of taxi cab franchises, and the formal adoption of the 12-month standard measurement period for health insurance eligibility, which is required for the Affordable Care Act.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Go to second. Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion passes for zero.
And we will bring back the name change when that is all resolved.
Under new business, we have consideration of entering into a community development block grant, small business loan agreement with Homer Soda Shop LLC. Sally?
You have the owners and operators of the proposed business here tonight to talk to you about that business. We have received a request for a $30,000 loan to the new business. That would be a handcrafted cocktail bar and restaurant that would be located at 113 East Union Street. And the renovation of the building and the new occupancy renovation has already started. And this would be under the CDBG program, under the small business loan piece. For those requirements, two new jobs would have to be created, and this would. You have also been given the information in the business plan, and we have the folks here tonight to talk about that.
Dr. McGimsey are going to speak, please?
Yes, I'm Jim McGimsey. I apologize for my voice. I'm channeling Johnny Cash tonight. Yes, I'm the owner of the building at 113 East Union. We are currently renovating that with the assistance of Patty Glazier, the architect from Asheville that helped you with the community house. I'm going to be leasing the downstairs of the building to the Homer Soda Shop Group, of which I am a partner in, and potentially expanding the business into the upstairs or expanding the upstairs into a residential area for a residential opportunity downtown as well.
Could you give us the public what the menu might be? And I know you haven't published it yet, but...
Certainly. Well, and let me share, I have my son here, Jamie McGimsey, who is part of our creative group, and also Courtney Morris. And Courtney, I believe, will answer some of your questions specifically about Homer's.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. To speak a little bit about our menu, we will be a craft cocktail bar. That means we'll serve classic cocktails. We'll use our own juices. We'll be making our own sodas in-house. We'll also be making our own syrup. So, everything, we'll be using local ingredients, and we'll be using traditional bar craft to do that. As far as food, we plan to serve raw oysters to complement our cocktails. We'll also have sandwiches, some small plates and snacks, including charcuterie, cheese boards. We'll be partnering with existing downtown restaurants, local farms, to procure our ingredients. We want to make sure that we are a part of what is already existing and flourishing in downtown.
Great. Counselor, have any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
We enter into a $30,000 CDBG loan agreement with Homer Soda Shop LLC for the purpose of opening a new bar and restaurant at 113 West Union Street.
Have a motion and have a second. I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
We do have collateral.
Yeah, it will be on the equipment.
And I believe also there's a personal guarantee?
Yes.
From all three of the individuals involved.
Any other questions?
What happens if they don't get the VDC loan?
The VDC loan? I don't know. That's a question for them.
Lee can answer.
This loan package is a joint venture with the VEDIC folks. We have been in contact with them. They have made application for that loan. The loan that they're applying for, for that loan, is roughly $52,000. There will be a sharing of collateralization as far as the equipment. There's also personal guarantees. So, if the loan does not go through with VEDIC, or they cannot find other sources for balanced financing, then this loan would not close. So, our loan is a partner loan, and we've done a few of those in town. They've been very successful. It kind of spreads the risk out, and it's worked really well for us on the larger, on the larger loans such as this.
Other questions for Lee? Or the owners? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of entering into the 30,000 community development block grant loan, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes for zero. Next, we have a consideration of contract for lobbying services. Sally?
I think Louie's going to take this one.
Louie? Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, for several years now, the city has contracted with the law firm of Manning, Fulton, and Skinner to provide professional lobbying services in Raleigh predominantly with the General Assembly, but also with state government generally. For reference, this past year, 2015, their fee was $50,000. That was, of course, a long session, some would say, a very long session, General Assembly year. The last short session year in 2014, their fee was $30,000. They have requested and presented a proposed letter contract for $40,000 for their services for 2016. They are trying to, their objective is to equalize somewhat their, between so-called short session and so-called long session years. Staff believes, and I believe, that the increase could be justified because 2016 will be a critical year for Morganton in its relations, not just with the General Assembly, but with the state government in many branches and the university system because of the issues that we're facing, particularly concerning the state property in Morganton, but more generally, the issues that we face every year, which seem to get more significant all the time, as to what the folks in Raleigh may tell us to do or not do as the city, as with other cities, but specifically Morganton, we have certainly benefited from having eyes and ears on the ground, present all the time in Raleigh, keeping us apprised of developments of what is really going on, not only publicly, but behind the scenes. I'd like to take this opportunity to say that Michelle Frazier, who's our primary contact, and her colleagues, certainly Mr. McMillan and Mr. Harden, were invaluable this past year, particularly in regard to issues involving the state property, the brought-in reuse, and the school of science and math. So, all those decisions will continue to be facing us in 2016.
Louie, I understand Michelle was even in meetings this week, I believe, Sally, with some controversial or some issues that could affect Morganton, correct?
That is correct, and in the month of December. The reality is, is that while the session may be called a short session and a long session, the new mode of operation is there is business going on all year long. There are committee meetings that are happening, even when they're not in session, and they do attend those committee meetings on our behalf. And so, it's basically a 12-month commitment. And I will also say that these folks, and now that we've had several years' experience with them, they are also outside contract lobbyists to Electric Cities. Electric Cities has their own internal lobbyists, but they also use outside firms, and this is a firm that they have used. So, they are very abreast of electric issues and things that could affect us as well, which is another reason why they are a good fit for us.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
We approve the contract with Manning, Fulton, and Skinner to provide lobbying service with the General Assembly for 2016 for a fee of $40,000.
Motion and a second. Thank you, Ms. Councilman Simmons. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes for zero. We have considerations of appointments to boards and commissions. Sally?
The Airport Authority is up for reappointment, and that agreement requires the legislation that we have two appointed members to that. One of those is an elected official, and one is a citizen...
One of those is an elected official, and one is a citizen representative.
Uh, we have actually two motions for the Airport, Airport Authority.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, uh, uh, reappoint, uh, Councilman Simmons to the Foothills Regional Airport Authority for a term to expire on December 31, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of Councilman Simmons to the Foothills Regional Authority, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay. We also have the chance to appoint another person. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert Pruitt to the Foothills Regional Airport Authority for a term to expire December 31, 2017.
Second. Do I have a further motion? All, any discussion? All in favor of Robert Pruitt to the Foothills Regional Airport Authority, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Sally, the Fireman's Relief Fund Board, please.
Uh huh. Um, the, the terms are up for the council appointee, which is Karen Duncan, and then the public safety appointee, which is Captain John Campbell. Uh, those terms are expiring, and would present those to you for consideration for reappointment.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to reappoint Karen Duncan and John Campbell to the Fireman Relief Fund Board for terms to expire January 15, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes four zero. Uh, consideration for the Community House Board of Control. Sally?
Uh huh. Um, that is an advisory group for the Community House, and it has one, two, three, four, five, six members on there. All six of those members have, um, said they are willing to be reappointed and continue serving. They were reorganized when the renovations and the changes at the Community House started, and they have all been good members. Those are Wanda Burnett, Michelle Spears, Phil Scarborough, Kay Dignan, Ron George, and Colleen Bennett.
Do I have a motion?
Move to reappoint, uh, Wendy Burnett, uh, Michelle Spears, uh, Phil Scarborough, uh, Kay Dignan, Ron George, and Colleen Bennett to the community, uh, building, uh, Board of Control for terms to expire on December 31, 2017.
Do I have a second? Any further nominations? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, move, motion passes four zero. And Sally, we have a 30-day notice for vacancies on boards and commissions, please.
Uh huh. A 30-day notice for appointments to the Morganton Housing Authority. There are three seats, uh, that will be up. One of those is currently vacant. The other two are held by Brian Black and Teresa Dehart.
So those, at our next meeting, we should try and fill those terms, so, no, no action needed. And our last thing is a discussion on policy on public comment. Uh, we do have a letter, uh, counsel in our packet stating the public comments, televising public comments at city council from our, city council from our legal council. Uh, would anybody like to make any suggestions or motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that, uh, we, uh, place the, uh, public comment portion of our, uh, city council meeting, uh, to begin at 6:00 PM and to end at, uh, 6:15 PM, uh, given each individual who wishes to address the council, uh, three minutes.
Thank you. That's a, that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Start our meeting at 6:15?
Start the, the meeting will start at 6:00. The public comments will be from 6:00 to 6:15, and then the televised portion will be from 6:15 till we get through. Is that the way I understand the motion?
That's my motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
That you would just, in effect, be, instead of blocking out 30 minutes for public comment, you'd block out 15?
Okay. So again, the meeting next, next, next month will start at 6:00, and the public comments will be from 6:00 to 6:15. Televised portion will start at 6:15. Councilman Cantrell, you look like you have a question.
If, if there are, uh, sign-ups for more than the 15 minutes, would we have some flexibility there?
Yes, you do. In your, in my understanding is you're not proposing otherwise to, to change your, uh, policy. Um, you, normally, the rule is if you've got more people sign up in the 15 minutes or whatever period is expired, it rolls over to the next meeting, and that, those people that didn't get to speak would be first up at the next meeting. That, that's what the policy says, but you do have the power, this is just a policy, this is not an ordinance. So you do have the power to waive that if you had unusual public interest, you know, people standing in the hallway or whatever.
And the mayor could make that decision at the time.
Well, that's an interesting question. I would say it would be up to the council.
I'd ask the council.
Yeah. I, I think that's probably council decision.
Well, then, flexibility, I think, would be important.
And again, that would be for public comment. If there's a public hearing, then there's no limit on the time, right? That would happen at another point in the agenda, and, and there is no limit for anything requiring a public hearing. And I would also add that in two years and two months, basically, since this has been in place with the three minutes, only one time did you use more than 15 minutes, and that was 18 minutes. And that was when Tyra.
The cat.
The cat was considered. Every other time, it has been really less than 15 minutes.
We have a motion on the floor to start the meeting at 6:00 and have public comments from 6:00 to 6:15. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Uh, Sally, do you have anything else that's not on the agenda?
I do not.
Do any members or the attorney have anything not on council? If not, the council meeting will be adjourned.